Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 7th Pitt County Board of Commissioners, Fiscal Year 2022-23 Annual Budget Public Hearing. This time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could sign in via the roll call, please. If everyone please stand for the indication in question.
Sheriff, we pray to eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. As an honor that you come and be present in this meeting, help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. In our holy name, we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag.
Thank you. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Everyone could vote, please. Motion passes. We can now move on to item number five, presentation. Mr. Vernon.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. We presented our budget back on May 2nd. The manager's recommended budget, and tonight, we do open our public hearing. There's three things I wanted to make sure you were aware of. You should have in front of you tonight a copy of our budget message. Should also have a copy of our proposed budget ordinance. And I'm going to highlight our GASB 8497 adjustment that I touched on last night during our June 6 meeting. So this is our only real revision from the May 2nd manager's recommended budget. As part of GASB 8487, our accounting requirements do dictate that we put in our budget an estimation of what we do believe we're going to collect for our municipalities on the tax side, which is $48,835,000. We will collect that and then pass that directly on to the municipalities. That will change our recommended budget from the May 2nd number from $288,324,834 to $337,164,833. So that will be our new budget number that we will use going forward. Before I turn it over to the public hearing, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. This time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. It appears we have several individuals signed up. Ms. Dance?
Mr. Chair, I'll read the rules prior to the public speaker addressing the board. Pitt County welcomes public comments on the proposed budget next fiscal year. Per the Board's Rules of Procedure, each speaker may speak up to five minutes. Please state your name and address prior to speaking, and Mr. Chair, I will keep time for each speaker.
Good afternoon. Sheriff Paula Dance, Pitt County. I come before you tonight in this public address to make one last ditch effort before your final consideration of the budget. First, let me start with my request for raises that are necessary to keep our deputies' pay from falling further behind that of our local law enforcement or local police officer colleagues right here in the county. Let me again remind you what deputies are responsible for versus police officers. It's easier to start with the police. They have the duty to answer calls for service within their 35 mile square area of jurisdiction. They investigate those calls and can make arrests. They can write tickets for traffic offenses. That's what police do. Now, let me explain to you what deputies are statutorily required to do. We have a duty to respond to calls within a 656 square mile radius. We investigate calls within this area, 656 square miles, and we make arrests, and we can write tickets. But in addition, we are responsible for the service of all civil papers within those 656 square miles, including inside the cities and the county, as we are the only ones who have the authority to do so. We perform all evictions inside the cities and the county, as we are the only law enforcement that has the authority to do so. We serve all domestic violence protective orders in the cities and the county. We must register all sex offenders in the cities and the counties, and are solely responsible for performing the statutorily required face-to-face checks on all 300-plus offenders throughout the county, to include the city. And this is done a couple of times a year. We are responsible for doing background checks and issuing gun purchase and concealed carry permits for all residents who reside in the cities and the county. We are responsible for permit revocations and physically picking up those permits in cases where residents can no longer legally possess them. We are responsible for the safety and security of the courtrooms when in session. We are responsible for operating the detention center and to keep the community safe when people break the law. And on top of that, we are the backup for all the other city jurisdictions when they need help. We are responsible for the care and security of those who find themselves incarcerated. In fact, my efforts to meet this responsibility recently bought ire from some of the commissioners because the price tag has increased. We in the sheriff's office are already behind in the pay scale with our city counterparts and will be even more so as they have just received another raise on top of a COLA. I respectfully ask for your reconsideration on the requested raises and differential pay. These are a few of the counties who recognize the sacrifices that officers make every day. New Hanover County, 17.82 to 29.89% raise. Onslow County, 10%. Nash County gave their people 11.8%. Brunswick County, 8%. Lenore County, 8%. Carteret County Sheriff's Office, 10%. We work 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. You cannot pay enough for safety, but you can pay those who put their lives on the line every day that try. Where we run in, everyone else runs away. Second, I want to ask the county to agree to fund our two detention center, our program positions. As of last year, 2021, the medical plan of the detention center had not been reviewed or updated in 20 years. It wasn't my job since the general statutes put the burden on the county, but apparently, if it was going to get done, we had no other choice but to do it ourselves. It now reflects and accounts for modern-day issues that inmates present with when they enter the facility, issues such as acute mental health conditions and co-occurring substance use disorder. These more acute needs are occurring more frequently in our inmate population. This greater acuity of need is why I was passionate in creating programs and replacing our medical company with one more equipped to meet the needs that we face in this century. We now have MAT through our new medical contract and real mental health services to maintain these programs. To begin these programs, we sought out a grant that afforded us the ability to hire two people who are professionals in the field to make these programs work. Detention officers are not qualified in the field of mental health to do what these people are certified to do. Our request that the county now fund these two program positions has been denied, in part, I feel, as punishment for the increased cost of inmate medical care. You get what you pay for, and that's what we're getting, we were getting previously. I want to finish this out by saying that on top of that, the county recommended workaround for the punishment is that I take away two detention officer positions that are temporarily vacant as we are actively recruiting to make space for those programs. I said from day one, I will not sacrifice the safety and security of the detention center and my employees. I stand by that, and I refuse to lose two detention officer positions to continue making workarounds for what this county ought to be doing in the first place. I cared enough to implement these programs and demonstrate their successes. Now, it's your time to show your commitment in making this county better. We have shown that we have the capacity to be leaders in this state and the country. As your sheriff, I've done all that I can do getting us this far. The ball is now in your court. Thank you.
John Gard.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Madam County Manager, and staff. Let me first start by thanking each one of you for your service. As I began to organize my thoughts on what I wanted to share with you this evening, I wondered how to convey information that would ultimately help you understand why Sheriff Dance's requests are so important to the Office of Sheriff related to recruiting and retention of staff in our county. As I thought about this, I tried to put myself in your shoes. I know we're all a lot alike. We care about Pitt County deeply. Neither you nor I would ever second-guess a brain surgeon or tell them how to do their job. Conversely, I also realized since I began my career some 30 years ago, I have not had the privilege of answering a call for service, attending an annual law enforcement training, engaging in a traffic stop, investigating internal complaint, interviewing a sexual assault victim, interrogating a murder suspect, or serving a criminal or civil process with anybody up here. In the same vein, in an effort to narrow my comments and provide more insight into what we do, I remember listening to a news broadcast early on in my career while working night shift that has stuck with me till this day. Again, this is way, this was way before the days of cell phone, YouTube, and social media. That being said, you can certainly do a word search and find what I'm fixing to share. Few of you here tonight are old enough to remember Paul Harvey and his Rest of the Story broadcast. And it was his What Is a Policeman broadcast that I heard that night shift many, many years back that stuck. In fact, a lot of folks say it's his best broadcast ever. Heck, some of you may even remember it. What I didn't know then that I do now is that Mr. Harvey's father inspired these words. He was a police officer who was shot and killed while doing what police officers do every day. In a tribute to our deputies and what I hope resonates with each of you, here is the rest of the story from Paul Harvey. A policeman is a composite of what all men are, I guess, a mingling of a saint and a sinner, dust and deity. Cold statistics wave the fan over sneakers underscore incidents of dishonesty and brutality because they are news. What that really means is they are exceptional. They are unusual. They are not commonplace. Buried under default is the fact, and the fact is that less than one-half of 1% of policemen misfit that uniform, and that is better average than you'd find among clergymen. What is a policeman? He is of all men. Is at most, is at once most needed and most wanted. A strangely nameless character who is sir to his face and pig or worse behind his back. He must be such a diplomat that he can settle differences between individuals so that each will think he is one. But if a policeman is neat, he's conceited. If he's careless, he's a bum. If he's pleasant, he's a flirt. If he's not, he's a grouch. He must make instant decisions which would require months for an attorney. But if he hurries, he's careless. If he's deliberate, he's lazy. He must be first to an accident and fallible with his diagnosis. He must be able to start breathing, stop bleeding, tie splints, and above all, be sure the victim goes home without a limp or expect to be sued. The police officer must know every gun, draw on the run, and hit where it doesn't hurt. He must be able to whip two men twice his size and half his age without damaging his uniform and without being brutal. If you hit him, he's a coward. If he hits you, he's a bully. A policeman must know everything and not tell. He must know where all the sin is and not partake. A policeman, from a single human hair, must be able to describe the crime, the weapon, the criminal, and tell you where the criminal is hiding. But if he catches the criminal, he's lucky. If he doesn't, he's a dunce. If he gets promoted, he has political pull. If he doesn't, he's a dullard. The policeman must chase bumbling leaves to a dead end, stake out 10 nights to tag one witness who saw it happen but refuses to remember. He runs files and writes reports until his eyes ache to build a case against some felon who will get dealed out by some shameless shamans or honorable who is not honorable. A police officer must be a minister, a social worker, a diplomat, a tough guy, and a gentle man. And of course, he must be a genius because we have to feed a family on a policeman's salary. As you can tell by the language and the singular gender used, Paul Harvey wrote this a long time ago. What is a Policeman was originally written as a news column over 50 years ago. As it relates to this profession, some things haven't changed, but it doesn't mean they can't. And you have the power to change it. By the way, I was a young officer in another agency who left that agency to come here to this office and this family. Because at the time, the pay and benefits were competitive in this county, and that's why I made the switch. That was over 20 years ago. And that, my friends, is the rest of the story. Thank you for your time.
Chauncey Congleton.
Good afternoon, Board. Mr. Chair, Mr. Co-Chair, Madam Commissioner. First of all, I'd like to thank all the deputies and detention officers that came here to show support tonight. My name is Chauncey Congleton, and I'm one of the chief deputies appointed by Sheriff Dance. I stand here before you tonight to make a plea to the Board of Commissioners in reference to the salary increases that Sheriff Dance has requested in her budget. During my 26 years of employment here at the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, I've seen a lot of things change, particularly with the death of George Floyd, which caused quite a bit of civil unrest across this country, including Pitt County. Pitt County Sheriff's deputies, along with our special response teams and investigations, went above and beyond their regular duties to provide security at our courthouse where many protesters showed up to exercise their First Amendment rights. While working the protests, we also assisted Greymouth Police Department, in which our civil disturbance teams took positions in front of the police department to help with the crowd. Thankfully, for the most part, the protesters were somewhat peaceful. During this time, the turnover rate for law enforcement as a whole began to increase. The pandemic also began to play a major part in the law enforcement turnover rate as well as pay. There has been conversation about the open positions here at the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. Due to this topic, I also here, I'm also here to make you aware of how long it takes to hire a deputy sheriff. The hiring process takes at least 90 days because of the thorough background checks that we do. A thorough criminal history check is also done, and if an applicant has lived in different counties or states, we have to check their criminal histories in those locations as well. After all of this, the applicant have to, has to take a written test, psychological backgrounds, and tests, and tests. If the applicant is applying for a sworn position, a prequalification with weapons, and finally, a drug test. This obviously is very time-consuming. Now, we have to contend with starting pay around the state, in which agencies our size or larger and smaller are offering at least $10,000 more than our starting pay. This is impossible for us to compete with. Greymouth Police Department went up, increased their starting pay $1,500. And after field training is completed, they get a 10% raise, which means a new police officer is making approximately $50,000. East Carolina Police Department just increased their starting pay to $45,000. Onslow County Sheriff's Office just this week just gave the deputies a 10% raise across the board. This is just, this is just to name a few agencies close to Pitt County. It's been brought to my attention that the Pitt County School Board has agreed to fund more positions, newer positions for resource officers, for schools in the county and in the city. These positions would put deputies in the schools that we don't have full-time deputies at. That is absolutely great. However, we don't have the slightest idea on how we will fill those positions before the next school year starts. In closing, I totally agree with, I totally agree that Pitt County Government and Sheriff's Office is a great place to work. However, with inflation on the rise as well as gas prices, being a great place to work does not pay the bills. I too am asking the Pitt County Board of Commissioners to grant Sheriff Dance's request to increase the salaries and give the shift differentials to the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Glenn Kate Part.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chief Kate Part of Detention Service. I've been around about 31 years now, and I think I spoke about that not too long ago. The support that we have in this room are members of the Sheriff's Office and its entity. And they are here because they believe that these are deserving opportunities to increase, to pay for the employees of the Sheriff's Office, to become more competitive with all of the surrounding counties that we're watching create some of these positive changes that we're seeing. And Pitt County is a great place. And I just want to start to talk about some of the concerns that I see and want to talk about the detention center needs going forward as it relates to some of the denial on the requests that we put in for during the budgeting time period. We, the Detention Center for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, have come a very long way with moving Pitt County into the 21st century. It was not easy to make the adjustments in moving away from the old medical provider with limited medical care to our inmates. We now have the comprehensive care that inmates of Pitt County deserve. Now that we've done that, we have a few changes that need your attention. We have two positions which are vital to the needs of the programs at the facility, the program coordinator and also the program social worker. These are must-have positions, and without the funding for those positions, the program's flow of facility operation would be disrupted, thus putting the burden on the already strained shifts to provide that support. Secondly, the medical officer position. The funding for that position is equally vital. This position allows us to reduce the strain on timely appointments for clinical visits. There are many visits for the comprehensive care which inmates receive daily. This position funding will help to remove the burden from the shifts. And thirdly, I would like to make an appeal for the denied pay raises for sergeants-in-hire. Some officers are currently making the pay of their supervisor or more. The pay increase through the incentive pay program had been denied for years past for sergeants-in-hire, leading to the shrinking and pay gaps we have today. Our officers have worked tirelessly to meet the needs of the organization. The demands have been very high and sometimes require them to work many extra shifts so that shifts are not below the required minimum staffing. We firmly believe that shift differential would be a positive move in the right direction. This move would incentivize and motivate individuals to work evening shifts. The evening shifts would be the hardest to field. It would put extra money in those employees' pocket who want to work evenings. It would benefit the facility in several ways, too. It would allow those employees to choose a shift, day shift or evening. It would help with health-related matters for some officers who may need day shift or more set shifts. And lastly, it would help balance the family structure and create some consistency in the home. We can all understand the benefit from that. Many employees will love the opportunity to experience this much-needed change. And now that we're able to provide these services, the need has grown tremendously with staffing demands. These changes are necessary to support the positive trends in Pitt County. And that said, I just want to say that this report you're seeing again is not by mistake. It's not by happenstance. It's because these staff members are dedicated to the cause, and they just want to be treated fairly in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Chad Suggs.
Good evening. Thank you for this address and this time. I just have a prepared statement, and then I'll go after that. You hear on the news, shots fired, active shooter, multiple victims shot. Businesses, schools, churches train their personnel that in an active shooter situation, they should run, hide, and fight. Run if you can, hide if you can't run, and fight only as a last resort. Deputies don't run away. We don't hide. Our only option is to fight. Your expectation and that of the public is that we fight. We move towards the threat and stop it from killing or injuring more people, even when we're in plainclothes without body armor, even while finding and stopping that threat risks us losing our lives. Even when we are not on duty, we're expected to still fight and protect the lives of others. If a shooter entered a county office building, the Health Department, or D.H. Conley High School, county employees there would run, hide, and fight as a last resort. We are county employees, but we're also different than everyone else. We fight. We find the threat. We move to neutralize its ability to harm others. This is before EMS comes in, before social workers and grief counselors attempt to put the pieces back together. No other county employees will enter that scene until we do our job. In addition to the great responsibility of stopping violent people from killing our citizens, we work under the expectation that we complete that task perfectly. We must enter a situation that no other county employees require to and neutralize that situation with near superhuman skill and ability in order to save lives, even the life of the subject that was trying to take hours just minutes before. We're different than other county employees. We're just asking that the county acknowledge that difference and compensate us for the risk that we undertake daily. After all, our county vision is a leader in the state and the best in the East. We understand that you face hard decisions. We understand that it's difficult for you to single out a group in the county and say, we're going to give you more than the other group because they're different than you are. But we also understand that those are hard decisions we have to make every day in everything we do, and we're responsible for those hard decisions all the time. We're just asking you give us that consideration that everyone expects us to give everybody else all the time. Thank you.
Dee Carmichael.
Good evening. Y'all bear with me. I'm just getting over a sinus infection. On behalf of my fellow Sheriff's Office employees in the room and those that couldn't make it, Sheriff Dance and I, I thank you for your time and opportunity to speak on this topic of the shift differential pay. I, along with a portion, or overwhelming majority, really, of the deputies, sergeants, and lieutenants gathered here today, work a very unique schedule, one that causes us to be away from family more than most, one that requires us to work nights, weekends, all that good stuff. My shift is a month of days and a month of nights. We rotate every other month. Those days start at 6:00 a.m. and they end at 6:00 p.m. Those nights start at 6:00 p.m. and they end at 6:00 a.m. And they rotate back and forth. During both days and night shift, I get a total of four days off, in which I have the entirety of the day to spend with my wife and family. That's a Saturday and Sunday twice a month. That is before I sign up for extra duty to fill a role, security at a high school sporting event, or attend an honor guard event where I proudly represent the county, the place I love and call home. All these things pulling me even further away from my family. This doesn't include the time lost in the evenings where I work on night shift, missing dinner plans with family and friends, missed birthday parties, weddings, and other special occasions for loved ones and neighbors. And my only response is always, sorry, I can't make it because of work. Will this shift differential allow me to make those plans? No, it won't. No amount of money will put me there. However, what that shift differential will do is alleviate some of the negativity endured by the lost time with loved ones. I leave you with this. Additionally, in a time where law enforcement employment numbers are lower than they've arguably ever been nationwide, not just here in Pitt County, it is now more important than ever that we do anything and everything in our power to incentivize recruitment and retention into this honorable profession. to incentivize recruitment and retention into this honorable profession. To my knowledge, if passed, Pitt County would be only one of four area agencies that provide this benefit, the others being the University of East Carolina, the North Carolina State Highway Patrol, and VITAC Police Department. I believe that it would, without a doubt, give Pitt County an edge in recruitment and retention of its future and current employees. And in closing, I again thank you all for your time and consideration in this matter.
Jason Jackson.
Good evening, commissioners, chairman, vice chairman, staff. So my name is Jason Jackson. I'm the programs coordinator for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center. I have been working with the Sheriff's Office since July of 2019. When I came aboard, I was instructed by Sheriff Dance to oversee and develop and expand the implementation of the SHARP initiative, which was her foundation and platform that she ran on. Her, the vision was to reduce recidivism and provide treatment with substance use and mental health, for substance use and mental health and co-occurring issues. I'm a licensed substance abuse counselor, a mental health counselor, and a forensic counselor. I've spent time working in prisons, jails, and the community, providing community treatment to individuals who are in need of substance use and mental health treatment. The goal of the Detention Center when I arrived, as it relates to the community development, as it relates to the sheriff's office's community development and positive social change, is it is also to act as an early intervention piece for people who find themselves in need of a particular type of treatment, specifically substance use and mental health treatment. During my time at the Detention Center, we have not only implemented the SHARP initiative, but we have expanded on it by developing WARE, which is Women's Empowerment and Recovery that focuses on the specific needs of women entering the Detention Center. We also offer the GED and High School Education Study through a partnership with Pitt Community College. That offers individuals a chance to earn their GED or high school equivalency. We've also implemented the MAT, which is the Medicaid-Assisted Therapy and Treatment Program. That program is in partnership with Port Human Services and our current medical team that, again, offers treatment to individuals with substance use disorders, as we all know, which is the gold standard now for substance use treatment, MAT. Along with some of the direct services that we offer in the Detention Center, we've also expanded our outreach into the community by adding a social worker into our ranks. A social worker aids in the needs, aids in social service needs for individuals detained at the Detention Center. We also have the navigator who aids in reentry and mental health needs. And an ever-expanding group of volunteers dedicated to, who dedicate their time to ensure that the programs are functioning, and the people who need services are having their needs met. Overall, year-to-date, we've aided more than forty people in long-term recovery and a productive, and productive living through MAT. We've helped over eighty-five SHARP participants, with approximately fifteen going to prison and approximately thirty-seven being released with no new charges and not returning to the Detention Center. Which, there was approximately ten who we've inevitably lost contact with. But out of eighty-five people, I mean thirty-seven that we now know that we are in contact with are in long-term recovery and doing well, and they are successful in the community. With tangible outcomes, the programs within the Detention Center have proven necessary to life-changing, necessary and life-changing for many people and their families, as well as the community of Pitt County. This is a positive social change that we all hope for our communities. My job here is to ensure that the people's basic needs are met through the services within the Detention Center and the community. This is done by developing partnerships within the community and our offices. With appropriate interventions, we will continue to see positive changes and improvements within our community. With that said, I will close by just simply saying, as Chief Kate Part said, the position of the program coordinator and the social worker are necessary positions. We've already proven that we are able to work with individuals who come into the Detention Center, and we are able to make change within their lives and within the community. It's proven. We have the numbers to prove it, so we're not making assumptions or hoping to do something that we've already done in the course of the last three and a half years. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Evans.
Hello, everyone. I am Dr. Sharon McDonald Evans, here to speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and to advocate for them. Sheriff Paula Dance is not a hidden figure. She has received national and statewide attention as well as recognition, not because she is the first African-American female sheriff in the state of North Carolina and the fifth African-American female sheriff in the country, but because she has extraordinarily developed and exceeded expectations with her innovative programs. Now, she could have assumed this role and maintained the status quo, but that is not who she is. She had a vision of diversity for this office. She had a division of recidivism for this office. She had a vision to deal with the hand that she was dealt with and bring this office into the twenty-first century. She had a vision to help citizens who made a mistake and found themselves at the Pitt County Detention Center. She had a vision to deal with substance abuse and mental illness because we lack mental health services in the area. And even with all that, she managed to maintain her focus and her vision on protecting and serving the citizens of Pitt County. Now, many of you have campaigned on the accomplishments of the sheriff and the sheriff's office. Now is time for you to live up to your past, future, and current campaign promises. She cannot fulfill the duties as a mediocre sheriff because she is not one. She is an extraordinary sheriff with a vision to serve at an optimal level because she does not believe in that. She is concerned in the livelihood of her deputies. Therefore, I stand before you with them to advocate for raises and maintenance of current positions. My point in stating all that to you is to remind you that you can't have it both ways. You can't tell people in a community that you support the Sheriff's Office when you are not providing fair operational budget that exemplifies your support. In this climate, it is unfortunate that we have to deal with shootings and many other things. Our deputies have continuously dealt with that. They've dealt with that regardless of the circumstances, regardless of whether or not they receive supplemental pay, regardless of whether or not they receive the raises, and regardless of their impact or their possibility of being exposed to COVID as they encounter people. Because you see, they can't work remote. They have to do their job in person all the time. They are always on duty, and we hold them to a high standard, and we benefit from the standard that they provide for us. I applaud them for their commitment to the office and their unwavering support that they have given to the citizens in spite of all these circumstances. Now, some of you have been on this board for a few years, and you are aware that growth has certainly occurred in Pitt County. I'm certainly aware of that. I came here as a college student in nineteen eighty-four, and it has truly changed. So with all that, you know, in 2018, our population was one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two people in Pitt County. And in 2022, we are at a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three people. Every year, Pitt County experiences a growth of at least one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven people. We are amongst the many counties in the state of North Carolina with continuous growth. And that is good for us because that brings economy to the area. It lets people know that we are East of not I-95, but we're still relevant and we're still wonderful. So with all that, think about the office of the sheriff, and they have to maintain six hundred and fifty-six miles in this county, regardless of the circumstance. Just think about that. Please do not present a budget to the sheriff's office that will not be appropriate for the requirements of the duties to execute that job. Please support our deputies and think about the increase of cost of living and things that they have to live. These deputies cannot work a second job many places because they belong to the office of the sheriff. They can't do things that many of us can do. So I want you to think about that. Think about that very carefully as you make your budgetary decisions. We may not be a county in the show-me state of Missouri, but it's now time for you to show us how you really feel about the sheriff's office and our deputies that protect and serve us. Thank you for your time.
Kevin Cook.
Hello, everybody. I'm Kevin Cook, and I am/was a participant, graduate of the SHARP program in the Pitt County Detention Center. I was among the first group of, I believe it was seven, that went through. I was there when Mr. Jackson was hired. Prior to, I was an active addict, alcoholic, criminal. Every couple of years, I would get arrested. I'm sure many of you sheriffs in the room have dealt with me, and for that, they need a raise. But seriously, though, when I got arrested in 2019, April 26th, I saw a sign on the window about the SHARP program. And I applied, and I got put in. Jason Jackson started. They started bringing in peer support specialists. They started bringing in, like mentors that come in and talked to us. People that had been to prison and got out and was being successful, people with members of society. So, you know, they started giving me a little hope. NA, AA, alcoholic synonymous, narcotic synonymous would come in. They would have meetings with us, introduce me into the recovery field. And through going through this for six months, you know, I decided at this point, it was time to throw the towel in. I was tired of trying to live life my way, and I was going to try a different way. Pastor, is Assistant Chaplain of the Pitt County Detention Center, David Linton, came in. He worked like a twelve-step program with us. Just so many people that I just started applying myself and listening to them and trying something different. The day that I got out, I was prepared. They let me out. You know, my bond just got dropped out of the blue one day, and they let me out. I wasn't expecting it. But through working with the SHARP program, I knew what I was supposed to do. And I got into an Oxford house here in Greenville. Through the SHARP program and working with Jason Jackson, I got hired at Third Street Education Center. Through, you know, the SHARP program, I started going to AA, NA meetings. I got a sponsor. I started working steps. I didn't have a GED. That got the ball rolling when I was in the SHARP program, along with Third Street and Pitt Community College. I obtained my GED about a year after I was released from the Pitt County Detention Center. Today, I'm enrolled in Pitt Community College for a two-year horticulture degree. I've worked my way up at Third Street. I'm the Director of Business and Workforce Development. I oversee approximately twenty, twenty-five people in business and workforce development where we hire people that has a criminal background or substance abuse issues, getting out of the Detention Center or prison, to try to help more people that was just like I was three years ago. But all of my success, everything that I've done, commercial applicator, peer support specialist, the ball got rolling because of the SHARP program in the Pitt County Detention Center. And I owe the utmost respect and would just ask that you would help fund them to continue that. Today, I go back into the Detention Center, and I tell the guys, "I slept on that bed for six months. I was here. I was in your shoes. You can get out, and I challenge you to get out and do better than I did, and I do whatever I can in my power to help them get as far as they can." Thank you.
Robin Abbott.
Bill, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I come tonight, and I'm not prepared with a paper with written words. What I came to say to you tonight is from my heart, and it's from being with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office for a pretty long time. I serve as the captain of Patrol Division. I send these young men and women out every day to do their job. No qualms. They never short from their duty. They work long hours. I was told one time that a good deputy never got cold, wet, or hungry. That was completely wrong. We're all cold, and we all get hungry, and we go about our duty, and we do what's required, and we meet the law. We meet the threat head-on. We don't back up, and we don't run. We meet it head-on. That makes us, kind of like my mama used to tell me, and I'm sure your momma's told you, we all are just a little bit special. And Pitt County deputies are just a tad special. They don't run, and they don't hide. The pay raises and shift differential are things that should not be neglected. Shift differential adds to these young men and women's ability to pay their bills, look after their families, and provide for themselves. When we think about these things, the ordinary person, and even myself, I was working, I worked shift work for a long time. I worked at the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, and I also worked it for twenty years with private industry. And I worked the same twelve hours that they work, except we rotated every two days, days and nights, twelve hours, not four weeks at the time. I miss my children growing up. I miss my church activities. I miss all of these things. But yet, we were paid shift differential, the old borough's welcome plan, and that was a long time ago. So it's not a new idea. It's an incentive to retain employees. It's an incentive to recruit employees. And we want to be the best. I personally think we are the best, second to none. But competitive-wise, we need to advance our edge and our commitment. I appreciate your time, and thank you for your thoughts on this issue.
Tony Barber.
My name is Tony Barber. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the county commission. First of all, I grew up in Pitt County. My grandfather was the chief of police in Farmville, North Carolina, for twenty-odd years. I was raised with a slightly military background and a lot of discipline. And I have a lot of love and respect for the police. And I broke the law. I took another path. I've made some mistakes. I've been in recovery, after recovery. I've relapsed, after relapse. And a lot of that come from being here and being in the wrong places with Pitt County. I have a ring around my neck that I wear. I graduated a two-year program called TROSA during North Carolina. It was a platform for me to be able to change my behaviors and get myself together. And I was still unable to keep it together, and I ended up back in Pitt County, and I relapsed. When I relapsed, I found myself back inside the Pitt County Detention Center. Back in the day, they did not have the program that they have now. Paula Dance has brought something to Pitt County that I think it really needed, and I think it needs more of it and more programs like it. Because the platform that she has brought to Pitt County and the man that she put in charge of that, Mr. Jackson, I have a lot of gratitude for both of these people. And I owe them the utmost respect. Mr. Kevin Cook here, the product of that program, is my sponsor. He has got me on my feet, and he keeps me in a better direction, and he is there for me at every cost. And if it wasn't for this platform, I would not have been able to stand here in front of you and tell you that I've figured out and got a better hold on what I was not able to gain in my prior, in the past history of mistakes that I've made. And I would like to say that I'm sorry for all of the trouble that I've caused in this county, but I'm also grateful that this county has given me the opportunity to regrow myself. And if it wasn't for Paula Dance, that opportunity would not be there. And since then, I have maintained gainful employment. I have maintained my bills paid, and I have regained a relationship with my mother. And I've also... And I've also rebuilt bridges that I had burned. I have made amends that I did not think were possible, and I've learned to live with resentments and to work through them and to move on past them. And I've never had more life and more peace and humble and humility that I have today, and I'm glad to be the man that I am in front of you right now. And I really hope that y'all take into consideration what Paula Dance has began here in Pitt County and help her to grow that into something more, because Pitt County needs that help, and it needs opportunity. It needs to show that it does care about its residents and the public, because Pitt County is in a bad place, and there's a lot of trouble out there, and drugs are causing the most of it. And the platform that they created has worked for me when everything else has failed. So, once again, thank you for allowing me to speak and allowing me to be here, and thank you, Paula Dance, for creating the platform that you did, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, for giving me the opportunity to be in that program. And you've made a better man than I could have ever thought that I would be able to accomplish on my own. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
My name's Scott Spivey. I've been recovering since about a year and a half ago. You know, I've been going to Pitt County Detention Center since they built it. And I can't count the times I've been in there, just feeling my thumbs, looking at the ceiling, but this time, I noticed something different. I had a tablet to look at, you know, after I sat there for about nine months, they let me go to SHARP, and then I started, I started realizing that, you know, maybe I could change myself when I got out, because I've been in and out so many times. I'm not good at talking in front of people. But anyway, I've been clean for, like, 15 months. And, you know, before I would get out, I would get out and, you know, just go back to the same routine, and I would just fall into the same pattern. But this time, I had, like, a list of phone numbers. Damn, I'm nervous, sorry. I had a list of phone numbers, and I had somewhere else to go, you know? Not that I had anywhere to go, but, you know, where I had, places I could go, there's, you know, I would just do the same thing, so I tried something different. I started working with Kevin at Third Street, and he takes me to NA meetings, and I started living with Ms. Trudy, you know, one of her boarding houses, her house, God's love. And, you know, there's a couple of other recovering addicts, and I'm just around clean people, you know, and it's, it's pretty much from being in the SHARP program, you know? Before, I would just get out and just do the same exact thing, you know? You know, I try to stay away from, you know, those type of people and them, you know? I got a list of, like, numbers I can call if I need help, you know? And, you know, I haven't, I haven't got high, I haven't, the worst I've done is smoked a cigarette, so, you know, I'm guilty of that, you know? I've hidden that pretty well, too, though. But, anyway, I think SHARP program's great, you know? There's no way I could have got out if I was just sitting back there and, you know, without the SHARP program, I would have just got out and done the same exact thing, you know? So I'm grateful for the opportunity to go through there, and I definitely thank you guys. I mean, put it this way, I sat in the block one day, and I counted, it was like 24 people in there. I know 22 of them got high, but it was, you know, so more than three-quarters of the jail are drug addicts. So I think SHARP program is, you guys should keep it, and, you know, if they need, they need funding, maybe give it to them. That's where I see it, but I don't know. I'm done. Thank y'all.
Hello, my name is Dr. Yoshi Newman. Hello, commissioners, county staff, fellow citizens. You and I, and everyone watching, have gotten an education tonight, haven't we?
Amen.
I had no idea. I really had no idea. We are in the room with an extraordinary group of people. I am, I'm honored. I'm so honored to be in the room with all of you. Budget allocations must be one of the hardest things you do. The limited pool of funds to serve more and more needs, all of them urgent, leads to difficult decisions. I've been listening for a long time to your struggles with that. The request Sheriff Dance has presented to fund a qualified social worker and clinician who can deliver medically assisted treatment in the detention center has to happen, using county dollars, not leaving it up to Sheriff Dance to scrounge up for grants. Serving the desperate mental health and social emotional trauma of citizens coming into the detention center has got to be done in professional, effective, and compassionate ways. The history of institutionalization of mentally ill people amounted to sedating them to a comatose state, restraining them in straitjackets and handcuffs, and putting them in cages. This is what mental health in this country and elsewhere looked like for centuries. Many of you will remember deinstitutionalization happened in the U.S. in 1981, when President Ronald Reagan defunded mental health institutions for good. Many people ended up on the streets with no health care, and such has been the case since then, with that population escalating. The continued underfunding and severe lack of services for people with mental health, substance and alcohol abuse lands many of them in the criminal justice system with their first stop, our detention center and jails. Thank you, Sheriff Dance. Thank you, Sheriff Dance, for funding these two positions in question with a grant. Thank you for building an award-winning department. Thank you to all of you officers, hard-working people of the Sheriff's Department. This grant is expiring, and it's up to you, county commissioners, to fund these positions fully, not with funds from two currently vacant detention center officers. That plugs two holes in the dam and opens two others. The dam weakens. Not hiring professionals and expecting officers to provide services they were not qualified to provide further weakens the dam. Providing ad hoc services weakens the dam. The dam breaks. This is a national tragedy that plays out every day in this country. It is dire. We cannot allow that in Pitt County. I implore you, protect our community and serve our citizens with humane and compassionate 21st-century law enforcement. After all that you've heard tonight, I don't know how you can deny these requests. Don't take us backwards. We must move forward. It is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's anybody else signed up at this time. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Moving on to item number seven, directives and action.
Chairman, I have a couple of questions for Brian Barnett.
Yes, ma'am.
Brian, my first question is, or, I'll wait for you to get out there. I want to be sure that our law enforcement knows how much we respect and appreciate them. I know it's a thankless job. Are county salaries for all of our departments, including the Sheriff's Office, in line with the comparable county organizations?
So, I wish Florida Hardy was here. Probably, she could probably answer this question better than I can from the H.R. standpoint, but I do know we go through a review of all of our positions every three years, which also does include law enforcement, to make sure that we are comparable with our work, we are at the same market level as our comparable counties. I will point out that a lot of the counties around us and across the state right now, you will see large percent jumps. A lot of those counties are, they don't do the type of review every year that we do. And now, due to just your basic employment shortages across the state in all sectors, they're having to make these large jumps to keep competitive with the market, whereas we, because we stay competitive with the market, we don't have to jump as high up.
We approved a grant last night for the Sheriff's Office. Can you explain that to us?
So I believe the grant last night was to $1.3 million to further the sharpenware program. I believe it's a federal grant. Last night, they approved the process to apply, and then they will apply, and hopefully we will receive that grant.
Okay. And my last and final question for Mr. Barnett right now. I know that this year, we were able to increase most of our department's budgets. How much of an increase did the Sheriff's Office get?
I don't have the exact percent increase, but between $3 to $4 million. Right now, the Sheriff's Office, if you look at all the, the way we, the way we put it in our financial software, we call them orgs. If you look at all the orgs under the Sheriff's purview, they increased from $36 to $40 million. If you look at your board goals that you approved every year, your priorities, you have education, number one, public safety, number two, and this budget keeps that within line. The Sheriff's purview is the number, the second-largest area that we fund.
If I could clarify that, too. The increase from last year to this year is 7.89%. If that's answered your question, and so the Sheriff's budget increased from last year to this year in the recommended budget about 8% as the second priority. Education increased 6%.
Thank you both.
Did you say education, 6%?
And it is your number-one priority.
Right.
But that was in order to be able to fund as much as we possibly could.
Right.
This is the highest increase that we've ever had for the Sheriff's Office in history.
This year.
Are there any other questions before I sit back down?
Yes. Before you sit down, Janet, this is for the county manager, as well as you, Brian. Comparable with the other sheriffs in the area, how are we in the positions and salaries and as compared to the other municipalities or the size of Pitt County?
That would probably be more of a Florida question to answer specifically than I would. I do know that when we do our pay-in-class study, I do see any changes, because ultimately, my department has to also approve those changes. Across the entire county, we don't change very often. In my four years that I've been with the county, I can probably count less than a handful of positions that we've had to change in all departments. But Florida could probably better answer that question specifically to your different job duties than I could.
And I can just add to that, too, to confirm as they've said, that the Sheriff's Office salaries are currently lower than the Greenville Police Department, and that's been historically the fact.
It's always been the fact.
Across the board, in county departments.
So, Brian, this is maybe a Florida question, too. But when we heard these percentages earlier, where other counties were jumping way ahead, were they jumping to the level of Pitt County?
That I could not answer, whether they're at our level or whether they have their own set of comparables. The one example that I do know that happened this spring, I called one of my colleagues down in New Hanover County. You know, they face a similar situation that we face. The Sheriff's Office down there is trying to stay competitive with the city of Wilmington. The city of Wilmington made a change, so the county made a change. I will tell you that in their case, talking to my colleague down there, they, too, do not do a pay-in-class study on a regular basis that we do. So they were far behind the market and far behind the city of Wilmington. What they actually implemented over the spring was a jump. They actually implemented their recommended budget just for public safety. They included the Sheriff's Office EMS, telecommunication. They did it in the spring, and then they brought the rest of their employees along through their budget process like we've done with the budget that we've recommended to you for the 4% increase that we are asking for all county employees. So I can't tell you if they're at our level. I would imagine they're a little bit above us just because of the volume and the population in New Hanover County, as an example. But I do know that, you know, they're facing some of the similar challenges that we're facing, but they just, they were lagging behind compared to what we are.
A number of people that spoke, spoke to shift differential. Can you put a dollar amount on that?
Sure. The request for shift differential was $227,962. That number was based on a 10% of the available folks who would work those shifts. There's many different models of shift differential, whether you do it by percentage, whether you do it by hourly pay, that exist out there. It's not, I believe someone pointed out tonight, it's not a new thing, but that was a number that was requested by the Sheriff's Office.
And Janice, was that denied?
Say that one more time.
Was that denied?
Shift differential, yes.
Yes.
And can you justify why you denied it? What was the, what was your reasoning?
So my reasoning was, in large part, to focus on as much money infused across the board as we could for the Sheriff's Office to increase the pay. So everyone in the Sheriff's Office will either get a 5.2 or a 6.4, to be able to spread that across. Also, in talking with the Sheriff's Office, we had talked about a particular plan for shift differential pay, to assure that if we rolled this out, that there would be people who would work nights and who would work days. We talked about the difference between it being on the sheriff's side or just on the detention side, in the house or out of the house, kind of as the sheriff refers to it. And in our budget negotiations, I asked her to come up with a plan to come back, to assure me that we knew that if we appropriated this money, that it could be rolled out. Would it be rolled out effective September 1 or January 1, or would on July 1, we have enough folks to fulfill a night shift and fulfill a day shift? And then we had to iron out the administrative piece of it. So based on the stage we were in the development of the differential pay and the other priorities that I saw, and my overall desire to maintain within existing revenues, I did not add differential pay into the proposed budget.
And you said that you reached out to the sheriff for information. Did she respond and give you whatever you needed?
Yes, absolutely. So we met on multiple occasions, so I met with every department had in the budget. We had set meetings for a period of time, and then, in the sheriff's case in particular, because her budget's so large, I actually had a follow-up conversation with her.
Well, what I'm about to say is, I don't want it to be a point of embarrassment, but since I've been elected as county commissioner, it's well-known that I don't care about other counties and what they pay. I care about Pitt County. And when I'm looking at a quarter million dollars, I think that's, what'd you say, $270 or something like that?
$227.
We're talking about 2/3 of 1%, maybe that high, of our total budget. We can't find that money somewhere?
Are we, for detention side, sheriff's side, or for both?
I believe that's both sides.
I thought that was one side.
Just one side.
Yeah, that's one side.
Okay, so what's the other?
Would be the equivalent.
Pretty much.
There's somebody talking right there.
Mm-hmm. So, yes, I mean, absolutely. If this board directs that we go back to the drawing board on the budget, we will certainly do that to add in differential pay. The other thing we can do is wait for a program to be developed and have it brought back to you.
So, to answer your question real quick, on the detention side, it's actually quite larger. It's $514,000.
So together, we're a little over- So together, we're a little over 1%.
Together, you're right at 750, so you're at 3/4 of a million dollars.
Out of 344 million.
And that would be, and I feel like I have to tell you that, that would be a reoccurring cost as well, not a one-time.
Understood. But inflation is six times higher than since Biden is, I mean, not Biden, but I mean, Biden has taken, taken office. Gasoline prices are double, food prices are up 50%. I mean, I think we ought to spring for it myself. I, I'm for spending the money. I've always been supportive of the Sheriff's Department and I can't see that I can change now. No further questions.
Stito.
I have a question. Did you say that you did not have a system to work out the differential pay system?
Right, that's what the Sheriff and I had talked about in terms of who would, she had surveyed staff, which side it would be on, and whether or not there were enough people from existing staff that she would, that would volunteer to do a night shift versus a day shift, or whether it would be involuntarily assigned. I had asked her to put together a proposal. I said I was very interested in differential pay. We spent a lot of time talking about differential pay. I wanted to know when the program could start to determine whether or not I've needed to fund a full 12 months of it, or whether or not it would take the first six months to put the program together and I would fund from January to six months of it. And so that's where we left it and I did not put it in the budget, so.
So we don't have, you don't have that information yet?
No, I don't. I mean, does that mean we can't put it in the budget? No, but that's the, that's the reason why I didn't.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian and, and Madam Manager, we're talking about a, as Commissioner Coulson raised, a very small percentage of the overall budget. From time to time, when we don't have a plan in place at the time of budget, we will often approve a budget and then once a plan is developed, it'll come back to us once we have the plan before us and approve it as a budget amendment. Is there anything in the current request for differential pay as it's come before the board tonight that would limit our ability, I guess in forecasting what the budget's looking like, limit our ability to consider something like if and when a plan is presented to our manager? I guess what I'm concerned about is, is an office approaching at a budget time without a plan in place and then us acting and putting it into the budget. Where our practice has been, when a plan, when a plan is ready to go, then we know what the budget will be and then we can act on it. We've, I think we've taken some steps during this process at, at, just, just last night with Pitt County Schools and ASRO saying, hey, look, when, if and when it's time, we will back you up.
Yes.
And, and so I guess my question is, are we able to accomplish it just as well through a budget amendment as we would otherwise if we were to take action on tonight's budget and have a plan come before the board once, once we know how it's going to be rolled out and then approve it then?
So from a financial standpoint, I would prefer to do it that way because that gives us more of an opportunity to analyze the numbers and determine the best method to be able to do a program and to afford it. Like I said, there are a lot of models out there and not that, not that I discount the numbers that I presented you tonight from the request. I have not done any type of super analysis on this to give you a number to tell you if this amount is the correct amount, the full amount or partial amount, but I, but there's absolutely nothing saying that, we, we do a budget amendment at every board meeting that we could not come back with a plan and a program in place. If you, if we get into the fiscal year, obviously we'll see how money is coming in and, you know, we can make the proper adjustments going forward.
And that was also exactly part of the conversation that I had with the Sheriff about once this is in place, if it was mid-year. And I think I extended that to a couple of things in our conversations as well. One was if all of your vacant positions are filled and you still need more, come to us and let us know what that need is. We're not going to leave you short. I said if the differential pay plan is there, come forward and we'll consider it at the time. The other thing I, I was very careful about in this budget was to meet the needs to the best as we could, we could attempt to do, knowing that the future economy is so uncertain. And so I wanted to be sure we had as much certainty within this budget going forward as we had and as much flexibility thereafter. So I hear that it's not enough and it's not that it's not enough for the Sheriff's Office. I hear that across the board and I know the Sheriff's Office is special and I hear it across the board, but yeah, I think that budget amendment, there would be nothing to prohibit this from being accomplished through a budget amendment when you can see available funds and a program is developed.
So I'll just clearly state that in my view, I think that it's better whenever we make a, when we allocate money as a county to a department, that we do so with clear eyes about what those expenditures are going toward. And in this case, I would be in support of the Sheriff's Office coming back before our board with a proposal for differential pay so that we can see it, that, that our, our, our finance department can, can see how it works within the overall budget. And keep it in mind, this is a really people-focused budget. We're really trying to focus on all the county employees and recognizing that this differential, this differential piece is, is a very critically important piece for folks that work this type of, this type of shift. So I will say that I would, it would be my preference to have that come back to us, but with the understanding that, that at least from this chair, there's support for a plan if and when a plan is presented, but I don't want to work on hypotheticals.
I don't either.
Since I started the, this, I'm okay with that, provided we don't let it languish.
And I think what we're saying is that we'll get that plan back for us to look at, right, with some direction rather than just, I won't, which is, certainly sounds like it's needed, but we need something before we spend the county's money. We need to be more knowledgeable. So what, what I think you're saying is that can that be put in with our motion as far as approving the budget as presented and that that will be looked at?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Perkins, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that very much. My comment is about more than just money. And I want to say to all of you, this is the first time I've seen this many of you together, other than when you got sworn in after Mrs., Ms. Dance became Sheriff. I have received comments from the community about your attitude, how kind, how presentable you've been, and the Sheriff has never heard this, but it wasn't for me to tell the Sheriff. I wanted you to know that the community has made some positive statements about you that has been under this administrator. And, and that means a lot for people who are downtrodden, who are in many kinds of things. And, and this young man right here, I, I could cry, but because there are a lot more like you out there. And I just felt like Commissioner Coulson would come up with something. He always come up with the things that hits my heart. But I want you to know, even though I tease and joke with you, the community has made positive things. And in this day and time, that we've having to face so much hatred and uncertainty, it makes me feel good that you say, how you doing and, and cut a joke. So please keep it up. We need your just good attitude and humor because fear is existing and we need you to be your best at what you do. I don't know how to shoot. I don't know how to shoot. And I want someone with good sense and a very positive mental attitude to be protecting the people that I love the most, and that's the Pitt County residents. And I'm in agreement with, so you would know, I'm in agreement with, uh, Commissioner Coulson. So I hope the county manager will find what she needs to make this happen for all of you. And I hope all of you who came and gave your testimony about what the program had done, that you don't fall back and you grow and move forward. We're supportive. Thank you. I thank you. I needed to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a former officer with the probation parole, I, I certainly understand the concerns and, and needs of this community and, and the position that the officers are in. Matter of fact, I understand it more now than ever. It's more dangerous and it's concerning. It has been brought out that we're going to look at this and we're going to look at it very seriously through a budget amendment. And that budget amendment will be coming forth. The, the detention center, I heard that the program coordinator and a medical office physician is, is, is a concern. So my recommendation is to look at this along with the pay of our officer through this budget amendment. And so I would like to make a motion at this time, Mr. Chair, that we approve the budget as it is and bring forth a budget amendment and consider all of these concerns that was brought out today. That's my motion.
A second. Related to the Sheriff's Office.
Related to the Sheriff's Office, yes.
It has been moved to the second. Any further discussion? Everyone could vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. If there's no further action tonight, entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second, second.
It has been moved properly second if everyone could vote on that as well.
Congratulations to all of you. Stay strong. Oh, we got, I'm all ready to go. Y'all got, ready to go.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Tom.
Oh, well.